Okay, I see we have a green light. So I will call this meeting of the Lake Mills City Council to order for May 7th, 2024. Madison, would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Kurler?
Here.
Mr. Waters?
Here.
Ms. Schmager?
Here.
Ms. Quednall?
Here.
Mr. Fields?
Here.
Thank you.
Please rise with me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we get started tonight, I'd just like to make a couple of recommendations regarding our meeting procedures. Ever since I've been on the council for the last three years, we have a very formal approach of referring to one another as council members and to staff using our formal names. And I know there's been our full names, and there's been a long tradition of this. I like it in the sense that it shows respect for one another and that we take our work seriously. But I've also found throughout my career and life that using first names is a little has a sense of collegiality and promotes collaboration. And so I would like to invite us to use each other's first names as we talk to each other on the council when we're having discussion, but also continue to be professional and respectful in our communication with one another. I've talked to the clerk and have asked that she would continue to use our formal names for the roll call, for our votes, and in the meeting minutes, so that that does reflect the, you know, the business that we're doing. So again, I'd like to invite you all to do that as you're comfortable. I know Mary mentioned last time that she likes to be called Mary, so might take a little bit of getting used to, but I hope everybody would be willing to give that a try. And no demerits if you go back to the old way. It's not a problem one way or the other. So the other thing I wanted to just mention is that it's been called to my attention that the President can recognize people from the audience to come and speak without needing to go through that rule suspension process that we have sometimes used if there's no objection from other members. So we'll just try to use that whenever possible to just again kind of be efficient with our meetings. Any questions or concerns about those?
No.
Okay, thank you. Then we'll go on to our agenda. Item number four, which is council member board reports and acceptance of meeting minutes. So we've got a handful of minutes. City Council from April 16th, Plan Commission from February 27th, the Board of Review from last year, May 2nd, and three meeting minutes from Housing Authority from February and March. Are there any questions or comments on any of these meeting minutes?
No.
I would move approval for approving the council member board reports and acceptance of meeting minutes from City Council, as you have noted.
And thank you, Mary. And this is one that we don't actually have to do have to vote on.
Oh.
So as long as there's no
Well, then I approve.
As long as there's no comments or corrections, we can go ahead and accept them in the record, but thanks for being on top of that.
Well, good. Thank you for that reminder.
Okay, so next we'll move on. So we will accept all of those into our city records. So item five is correspondence. Michelle, can I start with you?
Sure. I had a pretty quiet email. I had an email from Raina at the Legendary Lake Mills, as well as an email from a constituent, sorry. And then I had a phone call regarding an agenda item. Other than that, it's been pretty quiet.
Great, thank you. Greg?
It was also really quiet for me as well. I did serve on a panel for the Healthy Community Summit, had a good chance of networking while I was there as well, so that was very delightful. So it worked out well.
Great, thank you. Mary?
It was quiet for me as well. I had an email in support of the funding for the DNR study that is on our agenda later this evening.
Great. Steve?
Couple of items. I attended the Pipeline Safety Program in Madison last week. That was a good seminar for two hours. And then I just had two emails, the one on Legendary Lake Mills survey results, and then I had one from a person just inquiring about committees. And they thought I was still on the parks board, so just want some clarification.
Great, thank you. I had some a number of email contacts regarding Plan Commission work session, board and committee appointments that are on our agenda tonight, had a meeting regarding the changes with Club 55 and Arlec, attended the Legendary Lake Mills meeting, a monthly board meeting, and I had contacts about the Cottage Hotel and the Rock Lake Study in support of the city funding that. And then also had contacts regarding volunteer opportunities with our facilities and grounds for planters in the community, as well as for placing flags at the for veterans at the cemetery. So there's some volunteer opportunities out there. Okay, that's it for correspondence. So we'll move on to item six, which is questions and public comment. So at this time, the public is encouraged to address the council regarding items on the agenda. Public comments may also be made at this time on items that are not on the agenda if you have registered with the city clerk before the meeting has been called to order. The state's open meetings law discourages actions by the council on items not listed on the agenda. Please keep your comments limited to three minutes. State your name and address when starting your comments and fill out the sign-in sheet provided. For those attending online, please type your name and address in the chat feature if you wish to comment. Okay, I see. I know we have one person here in the room. Would you like to go ahead, Susan?
Good evening. My name is Susan Trier, and I'm speaking on behalf of the Rock Lake Improvement Association, or RLIA. We are a nonprofit, all-volunteer, membership-driven organization dedicated to protecting and preserving Rock Lake. Our address is P.O. Box 255, Lake Mills. The Rock Lake Improvement Association supports Resolution Number 24-35, which funds the last unfunded element of the DNR requested study that seeks to better understand the impact of higher spring water levels on Marsh Lake wetlands. Many residents, including a significant number of city riparians, have expressed concern that Rock Lake may not reach DNR-prescribed summer levels before the summer boating season without capturing more of the spring precipitation. This spring, Rock Lake's watershed has received ample precipitation. Our community has recorded steady early spring precipitation every year since 2019. Having the additional flexibility of capturing spring precipitation will help achieve summer lake levels rather than having to rely on precipitation occurring after May 2nd. Completing this DNR study is an important step in gaining that flexibility, so we encourage you to vote in favor of the resolution. Thank you so much for your attention.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak tonight? I see we have a couple of people online. Is there anyone who would like to make public comment? Okay, hearing none. We will close the public comment, and we'll move on to item number seven, which is the city manager's report.
Just a few highlights for this evening. The Tap Grant Project is ongoing and is progressing and remains on schedule, so you'll see them throughout the community working on that project. Brookstone Phase Eight continues to progress and remains ahead of schedule, and paving is still scheduled for June. May 5th through 11th is Municipal Clerks Appreciation Week, so our thanks go out to Madison Myers and Misty Quest for their work as our deputy clerk and city clerk, and for their dedication to the city. I have begun what will be an annual effort of meeting with each and every department and providing them any questions, concerns, ideas, anything they want to bring up to me and talk to me about. So I've made it through three departments and will have made it through each one in the coming months. A preliminary project schedule, as requested, for the Sandy Beach Restaurant Project is included in your packet. We've had our kickoff meeting with the architect, and we anticipate another meeting in May yet as a progress check-in, so that will continue to progress. On May 2nd, the dam transitioned to summer mode, so the dam is set to the summer maximum of 828.33, and will continue to maintain minimum mandated discharge of 0.13 cubic feet per second until lake levels exceed the summer maximum, at which point the dam will automatically regulate to maintain lake levels at that maximum level. We will remain at the summer maximum until the fall drawdown period begins on September 15th. The DNR has informed the city that we are expected to achieve our maximum fall level of 827.63 on or very near to September 15th. As we lead up to that and begin a drawdown to that level, we will issue press releases, social media posts, website announcements to get the word out that when that drawdown will occur in the fall. The Sandy Beach Mobile Home Park has been prepped for occupancy, and the Intergovernmental Agreement for Building Inspection Services has been executed with the town of Oakland. And then a lead we did discover that there was a lead service lateral to the library, so on May 6th, city staff replaced that lead lateral, and it is no longer lead.
Fantastic, thank you. And I'll note there's several reports attached to the agenda that were just posted today, so in case anyone didn't see those, some of the items you just mentioned are in your monthly report. Are there any questions for Drake on his report or any of the documents that he's provided? I just would like to echo our thanks to Misty Quest and Madison Myers for their excellent work during Municipal Clerks Appreciation Week. We certainly appreciate them. I did have a question on the Sandy Beach schedule, and it looked like there, as it looks through that timeline, there's the 30% built out at 60%, 80%, I think, you know, different design levels leading up to the fall, and then there's a November referendum. And I guess I was just curious if we need to go all the way to that level of design in order to get the information that we need for a referendum?
We think it's we believe that's the best course. When we go to referendum, we want to have the most accurate information possible, and the best way to do that is to have bids back with actual real-world costs of what it will take to complete that project in terms of funding. Otherwise, we would be we would be going off of estimates, which we would be we can do, but it runs the risk of the referendum providing this council with an advisory opinion from the electorate on a number that may have been inaccurate, not through anyone's fault, just through, you know, estimates being off instead of having the bids back. So we it's not it is not necessary. We could do it off of estimates, and we could ask the architect to adjust that schedule to account for that, but we run the risk of not of missing the mark on the estimate and having what the referendum asked and what our actual number will be being different.
Okay, thank you. That helps to clarify. Mr. Fields?
One thing to add there is when you tend to build on drawings that are 60, 70, 80% complete, that detail at the end gives you a lot of the expensive details, depending on what you're picking out. But when you bid that way, there tends to be a lot larger contingency put on the bids because they don't know they don't have the final design. So sometimes it'll actually show a larger number, too, depending on what you're doing, just because there's a lot of contingency that can get built in.
And so then the way the schedule is laid out, we would proceed all the way to bidding out the project and then take those results to citizen referendum before issuing any kind of approving any kind of contract.
We would put it in the bid spec to that their bids must be good for 90 days or whatever time period we needed, so they would price that into their bids as well, so that the referendum could occur that first Tuesday in November, and then the next city council meeting, you would be able to make a decision on award based on the feedback from that referendum.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments for Drake? Okay, thank you. So we will go on to council business, the next agenda item. And the first item, letter A, is a consent agenda, and we have a memo from Misty that describes the consent agenda process, just to refresh our memory for those of us who have dealt with that before. But essentially, we have a list of five items that we can approve all the items with one round of votes without discussion. If any council member wants to request to remove any of the items from the consent agenda in order to discuss them, you can request that individually. It doesn't require a second or a vote. So we have five items. There are confirmation of various appointments to boards and commissions and a request for overnight camping under Resolution 24-29. So is there any council member that wants to request to remove an item from the consent agenda?
So that includes all five sections?
That would include all five items. They're lettered one through, I guess, Roman numeral one through five.
So I move to approve the consent agenda?
A second.
Okay, so we have a motion from Mr. Waters, a second from Mr. Fields to approve the consent agenda. Madison, we do a roll call, please.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Ms. Schmager?
Aye.
Ms. Quednall?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Kurler?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you. Next item on our agenda is a presentation from Legendary Lake Mills. So I think Raina Severson will be joining us.
Actually, there's the overnight camping, but we can move to that.
The overnight camping was a part of the consent agenda?
Oh, was it? Okay.
Yeah, we're up here. All right. Welcome.
Raina Severson, Legendary Lake Mills. Thank you guys so much for having me tonight. I'm really excited to present just kind of an overview of what's been going on, the growth that we've seen since the Chamber of Commerce and the Main Street Program merged in 2021. We've had just so much momentum for the last couple of years, and it just continues to, you know, we just keep on moving and keep on seeing more involvement with the community, more excitement, and we're really excited. So, and I'm going to try to not ramble on forever, because if you guys know me, I talk a lot. But so I just want to start with kind of a reminder of kind of the structure that we use within Legendary Lake Mills. So being a Chamber and Main Street Program, when we did merge, we decided to follow the structure of the four-point Main Street Program approach, which has four pillars. So we focus on economic vitality, which you can think of as like cultivating a strong business relationship, having educational resources, having networking opportunities, toolkits for entrepreneurs who are coming to town, design, which is kind of all-encompassing in restoration, installation, art installations in town, community beautification organization. So that's our leadership in the community. It's our manuals, our resources that we can provide to our Legendary Lake Mills members. And then we have promotion, which is the marketing of our community, our Legendary Lake Mills members, our businesses and our organizations. So that's kind of the four-point pillar approach that we utilize as we are kind of going over strategic planning and coming up with our focuses. All right. So as I said, in 2021, Legendary Lake Mills formed. We decided to merge the Chamber of Commerce and the Main Street Program. There were a lot of reasons for that. I know it had been talked about many times in the past, but we just decided at that time, with the amount of turnover there had been through the Chamber of Commerce and the Main Street Program, that we should pool our resources, kind of refocus our energy, and just have more organizations so that we're not reinventing the wheel all the time, as well as eliminating the competition between the programs. And you know what? That was a ton of work, but totally worth it because we have seen the results, and it truly has been amazing, all that we've accomplished over the last couple of years. So, you know, our mission condensed version is to make Lake Mills a better place to live, to work, and to visit. Since merging, we took on all of the events through the Chamber and the Main Street Program, and we have been successful in keeping 10 of those 11 events, which is phenomenal. You know, they're big events. Our fundraising, a majority of that does come from these events that our community loves, and we love to put them on, so we're very happy about that. We've increased our staffing, so before it was a 20-hour-a-week job for the Chamber Director and for the Main Street Director. Now we have one full-time director, which is me, and then I have a program coordinator, a rock star, and then a new market manager who is absolutely killing it. We have implemented four betterment projects. We have three more that are being worked on right now. We've majorly expanded our advertising opportunities for our Legendary Lake Mills members. So we've signed a two-year lease on a digital billboard, which we allow four of our members to take advantage of each month. From time to time, we allow three if we have something that we're trying to promote to get people to town. Additionally, we have our Love Lake Mills newsletter that has advertising in the insert, and we have built relationships with other Main Street and Chamber of Commerce programs where we can do kind of exchange marketing and promote each other. You know, our volunteer hours over the past three years have been pretty tremendous. Our program really heavily relies on our community members who love this town so much and want to be a part of it and work on those events, work on those installations. We've seen a major uptick in the amount of volunteer hours that we're reporting, and a lot of that does come from that first year when we were getting the merge together. It was two boards coming together, meeting weekly for almost a year. It was pretty amazing. And then our planter program, we run the downtown planters. That takes a ton of time, tons. Additionally, we've majorly increased our social media following and our outreach. We've gone from 20,000 organic, what's the word? I'm sorry, organic viewers to 60,000 in three years, which is huge. And that all came from a social media strategy that we've really stuck to, using social media scheduling, calendars, and in consideration, we're posting about our Legendary Lake Mills members, our businesses. We're trying to get our community to understand, you know, who is all here, what these business owners and property owners are doing. And then as far as budget goes, we've increased the budget, the items that are like facade grants that we're giving out, art installations that we are, you know, getting around town. As far as our community give back, we have increased those budget lines greatly. So we're really proud of those, you know, how far we've come in the last three years. You can go ahead. All right. So when we merged in 2021, we kind of had four points that we wanted to focus on, which was increasing our marketing, investing more in Lake Mills, increasing our fundraising and program growth. We really have done a great job at meeting all of these four focuses, especially proud of our marketing initiatives. With the merge came the Love Lake Mills newsletter, so that's that newsletter that hopefully all of you have seen. It goes to everybody in the zip code quarterly, and recently it won a Wisconsin Economic Development Award for Best Partner, what is it? Best Collaborative Business Marketing Initiative. We were really proud of that. It really shows, you know, how much of a standout program that is. I actually am going to be working with some other Main Street programs to kind of get that up and running in their communities as well. It not only is just a positive, you know, just a positive newsletter that shows all the great things that are going on in Lake Mills, but it's also offering our local businesses and organizations to have marketing opportunities to kind of stand out and promote what they've got going on. So we're really excited about that. Additionally, like I said, we've signed that billboard lease. We've really increased our social media efforts, and you can see that with the analytics from our Facebook. You know, we've just grown such a huge following, you know, and it just continues to grow. And we're so excited to see the community feels in the loop on everything that's going on. The next point was investing in Lake Mills. As I've said, we've increased our budget for donations, installations, community betterment, and increasing funding. We had to sit down with our we have event chairs who help us with all of our events, and we really had to sit down while we were merging and figuring out how we were going to work through staffing especially, and to be able to afford that large cost, especially with wanting to have this position with benefits and things like that, just to protect the future of the program as well, to make sure if there's turnover that we can find, you know, people to come and fill that role and feel like the position is something that they can take on, and it's something that's going to be beneficial for them. So we worked with the event chairs as fundraising through our events is such a huge income in our budget, and really worked on making additional couple thousand dollars for each of those events and just making them larger, which also benefits the community as well because, you know, these people who live at Lake Mills locals are enjoying all of these events, and the bigger the better, right? You know, it just feels good. As well, the program growth was the last goal that we were focusing on, and, you know, we have done so much work on the program growth, and it's not it starts at the very, you know, bottom. We're talking about manuals, we're talking about changing our bylaws, we're talking about staff benefits, everything, making sure that all of our events have really easy-to-follow timelines, budgets, volunteer hours tracked, so that anybody who might be taking this on knows what is to be expected. When we merged, we really just wanted to make sure that we keep this program strong for a long time. All right. I feel like I'm already talking a long time, but I'm going to keep going. All right. So as I said, we had these community betterment projects that we've been working on for quite some time. Legendary Lane was a huge one. We received a grant from WEDC. We worked in partnership with the city, the neighboring business owners next to that alleyway, and we spent a lot of money to ensure that it was the best-looking alley that we could. I think we had budgeted $5,000, but we voted to put an additional 10 into it just to ensure that it was looking great, and we're so proud of it. We've got our historic plaque project. Those plaques will be hung, I believe, next week. It was supposed to be a month-long project, and it is two years later, but it is happening, and we're going to keep it going to just make sure that we are paying respect to our property, you know, our property is keeping our history strong here, and then just adding another amenity to our downtown, so that when people come downtown, they can enjoy a nice historic walking tour. We've implemented the Commons Park kiosk. That was a project that the Main Street Program had actually, you know, done in the past, and it was something that just needed to be renovated, I would say. There was nothing there. It was a vacant kiosk for a while because what they had put was something that needs to be changed a lot, and it was just going to take a lot of maintenance and money. So now we have a nice downtown walking tour that shows off our art installation, shows off our history, and it's something that will be longstanding, and it's beautiful. We worked with local artists. It just it looks like a piece of art in our downtown, and it also is so connected to the community through the history and the art that it's showing off. Additionally, just mentioning the planter program again, you know, we take care of the concrete planters that are around the downtown district, and that's something that we budget for every year. And then we also rely on community support donations, business owners, local community members, everyone who wants to see those gorgeous planters downtown. members, everyone who wants to see those gorgeous planters downtown. And it takes a lot of time. Like I said, it's one of our more heavy volunteer initiatives, but it's so important to us because it just adds to the charm of our downtown so much. And I just want to say, at the community projects slide, we really appreciate the communication and the help that city staff and city council has given us. We work really closely with all of you guys on those projects, and the communication has just been so great for the past couple of years, and you guys really helped us with those things. All right. So I'm going to move on to the transformational strategies. So the background on this is that with being a Main Street program, one of our benefits is that we get to work with Wisconsin Economic Development very closely. They help us with resources as far as grant writing. They help us with, we get invited to workshops. I have to go to a certain number of those every year to receive our accreditation. And they have seen the growth that we've had over the past three years, and so this year, they chose us to take part in a transformational strategy, which was with representatives from WEDC as well as Main Street International. And what they did was they helped us facilitate focus groups with local community members, property owners, business owners, elected officials, as well as sending out a survey to community members and getting feedback on just what's going well in Lake Mills, what they think Legendary Lake Mills is doing a good job of, and then where we can improve both through our program and then within the downtown district. And we were really blown away by the feedback that we received. You know, we, we kind of got a better idea of where we could refocus our energy and where we could move forward, especially with all the momentum that we have going on right now. So I know I sent all of you the data from both of those things earlier today. I'm going to be sending it out to the community through press probably a little bit later this summer, but I'll just go over a couple of items that kind of stood out. So as far as business owners, we found that the top three concerns were attracting new customers, parking, and staffing. Business owner top three improvement needs. We had a lot of survey results saying facade restoration, roof replacement, and energy efficiency. Property owner top three concerns, cost of maintenance, neighboring building maintenance, and deteriorating public infrastructure. And then as far as locals go, we focused a lot on the top three issues that they felt needed to resolving. And they said that they wanted more business mix, more business hours within the downtown district, and then vacancies, which they were referring to Century. We had an item where they could, you know, list what they were referring to, what the address was, and we got a lot of feedback on the Century Building. Favorite aspects of Lake Mills, community events, dining, and the general community feel, which made us feel really good. So when we looked at all of the data results, we started by looking at the strengths that Lake Mills has and where we can work to build upon those strengths and how can we kind of enhance them for the community. So what we found the strengths were, a lot of people mentioned that they thought our community was charming and quaint, and there's just no doubt that those who live in Lake Mills know and appreciate that we live in a special community that feels unmatched. It's just so charming. It's so sweet. The community is so great here. A lot of references to our lake as being the jewel of our community, especially with its location being so close to downtown. The diverse business mix for a town of our size, we have such diversity here. We're so lucky to have all that we have in Lake Mills. Entertainment was something that was also mentioned as a strength, just being able to almost every night of the week have a different live music option, a different crafting class option, having events all the time, especially in our local parks. The cultural aspect was a strength, just having, you know, an art alliance that's strong in our town, as well as an art gallery, multiple pottery locations, and also live theater performances. We really do have it all in Lake Mills. Also mentioned was our beverage manufacturing, that we have two breweries, winery and distillery, and then our community collaboration. So a lot of references to the community outreach made me feel good. The Love Lake Mills newsletter was really referenced a lot, talking about how they can see how the organizations within Lake Mills, whether it be Legendary Lake Mills and the Rotary Club or Club 55, work together in such a great way in our community. And also, they feel in the loop with knowing kind of what's going to go on. So the community outreach was a great win. All right. So as far as the transformational strategy and how it relates to our four-point approach, we kind of looked at what specifically we could lump in with those pillars that I talked about earlier. So what we found was with economic vitality, people are, our Lake Mills locals are super happy with how charming our town is, the community feel, and the offerings that we have in our town, but concerned with vacancy. And again, big reference to Century. I think they had made a word cloud for us to better understand the data, and she said it was the first time that she had ever seen the biggest word on the word cloud not be parking, and it said Century. Design, as far as that goes, again, very happy with how charming our downtown is, especially Commons Park, the planters, the new Christmas lights, which are awesome. But again, the biggest concern as far as design goes was vacancy. Promotion, happy with the marketing, especially through Legendary Lake Mills newsletter, press, social media, community calendar, and website. Concerns came from having, maybe promoting more tourism to town, and also having a hotel come to town. And then lastly, as far as organization goes, stated through a survey that very happy with engagement and outreach, would like more communication from the city of Lake Mills, which I think we could partner on and do a little bit more of that through the newsletter. All right. So planning for the future, and again, I'm using a reference to our four-point approach. You know, as far as economic vitality, we are going to continue applying for grants, especially to support our program. Like I said, right now, our, our budget, a lot of the money is coming from fundraising of events, or fundraising through events, and we really want to see more grant writing. I have a goal this year to fill out one grant a month, which thus far I have fulfilled, have not received all of them, but we got a couple, and it, you know, it feels good. So we're going to continue to work on grant writing while also providing more grant support for our local businesses, property owners, and organizations. And we've already seen just a lot of growth in that area as well. More support through workshops, more educational resources, especially more networking and resources for our business park in our manufacturing sector in Lake Mills. Planning for the future as far as design goes, we are going to continue to increase the budget on facade work, community betterment, community beautification, and partner more with local organizations to kind of make that happen. You know, we have a goal to use, we want to use the full budget every year on facade grants, on community betterment, community art installations. So just making sure that we are coming up with a long-term plan rather than each year coming and saying, what are we going to do, you know? So we're excited. We have a lot coming in the future. As far as promotion, we're going to continue to grow our website. We're not quite happy where that is at yet. We want to have more resources for our community members and then also our Legendary Lake Mills members. We're going to increase, we're going to keep the Love Lake Mills newsletter quarterly, but we are going to add additional advertising opportunity and possibly grow it by a page so that we can continue to provide outreach to our community members. As far as organization goes, we're doing a really great job with the structure, the organization, the timelines, but we want to make sure to have a stronger volunteer recruitment and retention program. So I'll be taking a couple workshops on that and hopefully get a stronger volunteer retention program going. With our program, volunteers are of the utmost importance, so that's going to be a huge focus this year. And then additionally, we want to work with the school district to implement more apprenticeship and internships throughout the community, within our membership, within our program, more benefits to the youth of Lake Mills, and continue to grow our membership benefits. I think we've done a really good job of increasing the benefits. We've got some ways to go, and I'm going to work with some other chamber directors from the area to kind of build those membership opportunities. Yeah. But all in all, I just wanted to say thank you so much. I think that the communication between Legendary Lake Mills and city council, city staff has been wonderful, and I think it's only getting better. I'm looking forward to more partnership. I would love to work a little bit more closely with you guys, especially when it comes to the big picture items, you know? But yeah, I'm excited for the future, and I'm so happy that you guys are here. Love Lake Mills. We love Lake Mills. We're really excited about what we've got going on, and we hope you are too. So do you have any questions for me?
Thank you so much, Reina. Thank you so much for being here, and I know you've sent us a lot more information in terms of the data that we'll probably all be diving into, and we'll probably have more questions or see more opportunities to talk with you and work together. Does anyone have any questions or comments for Reina this evening?
Great.
Thanks for the presentation, Reina. I haven't had a chance to look at your survey yet, so I hope I don't ask something that's in there, but a lot of the things that you mentioned are on our radar already, like the Century Building. That's a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to do something good for the community, and we're really focused on that, and hopefully we'll see some good things happen there in the, hopefully in the near future. The hotel, if we could get a hotel in the city, that would help with room tax, which would give us money for tourism dollars. Hopefully that'll happen in the future. We almost had it at one point, but it slipped away, and maybe another opportunity will come up soon, so we're hoping for the best there. But you had mentioned deteriorating public infrastructure a couple times, and I don't know if that related to Century or if that was something else. Do you know what, what that could have been? Because that's, that's maybe something we don't have on our radar.
Yes. I know referenced was definitely the Century Building. There were a couple comments about different areas downtown that the sidewalk might have, you know, ledges on it or things like that. But in the survey, you can see all of the responses, so I'm sure that there will be some items that will stick out to you, but most notably, I would say, was definitely Century.
Okay. So I'll take a look at the survey, and if I have questions, I'll just give you a phone call.
Yeah, I would love that.
Thanks.
Any other questions or comments this evening? Okay. Thank you again, Reina.
Thank you.
Appreciate you being here, and thanks for sending the additional information. Okay. Our next item is Resolution 24-30, which is related to full-service retail outlet approval for Tyranina Brewing Company doing business at the Pharmacy. Can I get a motion for that resolution?
If I can get my computer pull up.
I move to approve Resolution 24-30, approval of full-service retail sales at Tyranina Brewing Company at the Pharmacy Public House, 203 Main Street, Lake Mills.
I second.
Okay. We have a motion by Ms. Quinault and second by Ms. Schmager. And I skipped over, Madison, can I just have you read the title for that Resolution 24-30 for us, please?
Sure. That would be, grab it here. Approval of Full Service Retail Sales at Tyranina Brewing Company LLC, DBA, the Pharmacy Public House, 203 North Main Street, Lake Mills, Wisconsin.
Thank you. So Drake, do you want to walk us through this, or Dan? I don't know who's going to handle this one tonight.
I can. And the owner proprietor are here. If you would like to speak with them, I'm sure they're willing. There is a change in Wisconsin statute, the law regarding the operations of breweries in the state and the ability of municipalities to either license or not license their activities. Tyranina has, Tyranina Brewing Company has applied, or they intend to apply, for full-service retail outlet status for the Pharmacy Public House. What that means is that they have full service, including beer, wine, and spirits at that location under their brewing permit, absent a local license, which is not allowed or required in this circumstance. This is a brand-new application, brand-new law that is just put into force and effect, effective May 1st this year. I'd spent a long time coming. The rewrite of Chapter 125 in Wisconsin statutes has been desired by different entities for a long time, and this is the state's response to attempt to kind of create more of a uniform field or environment for producers of alcohol, meaning that all breweries, rectifiers, wineries can basically serve full service at outlet locations so long as they meet production thresholds. I think that's a decent synopsis. We included a brief memo. We included the questions and answer section, the frequently asked questions from the Department of Revenue regarding this specific determination and action. Tyranina has applied under their AB 105, and it does require municipal approval. There is the ability for municipalities to basically insert additional regulations if that is desired. What I'd say at this point is that this isn't a licensing opportunity. The license is through their brewing permit at the state, and we don't really have anything on the books with regard to policy or ordinance that would dictate your action. So I think that's a decent synopsis. Right now, Tyranina, for their second location, their retail outlet, has requested the ability to engage in full-service retail.
Thank you. Are there any questions regarding this proposal for staff? Or any questions for the proprietor? Okay. Thank you for that summary. We'll move to a roll call vote on Resolution 24-30.
Ms. Schmager?
Aye.
Ms. Quinault?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Kurler?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you. Our next agenda item is update and possible action regarding the Cottage Hotel at 265 South Main Street. Click. We have our zoning administrator coming to the podium. And this is the project, the council approved a zoning amendment and a development agreement back in February of this year, so that's our background.
Yep. You took the words right out of my mouth.
Thanks.
So yeah, back in February, there was a developer's agreement approved by you guys for Drake to sign, and we had put a deadline of April 1st to issue building permits. On April 1st, we actually, well, I guess I'll back up a little bit. In order to issue the building permit, we need to issue or sign a developer's agreement with a developer. And in order to get the developer's agreement, there's some documents that we needed to have satisfied, set a state-approved plans, easements for the water main that's being installed, and they were installing an easement for access to Veterans Lane for the Fire Department EMS to get out to Main Street. There was a, because there's a water main being installed, the DNR had to approve a water- water main being installed, the DNR had to approve a water main permit. Um, there is an surety bond that needed to be, uh, acquired.
Assured.
Assuredy. And then, um, an exterior plan, you know, there's some of the siding outside needed. We just asked the, the developer and the architect to get us a set of plans to show exactly how we're going to address the exterior of the building to make sure, uh, before I issue the permit that we're all on board with, um, how it's going to look. Um, so April 1st, I received the state-approved plans, um, and we still hadn't had the other documents to issue the permit. I did allow the, uh, owner to have his contractor start demoing. So they've been demoing since early April and I was in there late last week and most of the wall coverings on third floor, second floor and first floor are removed and in the dumpster, there's still some mechanicals that are in there, but I would say 70% demoed. Uh, but I still have not issued the building permit because we're still waiting on a couple of things. Uh, late today, we did get the DNR main, uh, permit approval and I did get some legal descriptions for the easement, but they're, they're not recorded easements yet, but I think we're as a staff probably satisfied with the locations and the legal description of the easements. So really the big thing yet for us to issue or to sign the developer's agreement would be the surety bond. And then for me to issue the building permit, I'd like to see the exterior plans, but we're, we're close. We're just not where we wanted to be by April 1st.
So, um, just to clarify, I think, um, what you indicated Troy is that in the developer's agreement, um, it anticipated the city issuing building permits by April 1, but we needed all of those documents in order to issue the building permits and we're still waiting on a couple.
Correct, correct.
And can I just interject here for one minute? I want to just clarify one thing. The, the development agreement in this circumstance, which requires the surety, it doesn't necessarily have to be a bond, but surety for, uh, the public improvements that are being installed, um, that is requirement in, um, in contemplation of the, the zoning change that was requested by the petitioner. That included a, a planned development district overlay that allowed him to, um, make certain essentially variances within the code. It's not technically variances. There's some ordinance that's relaxed with regard to the proposed development. The PDD overlay explicitly requires the development agreement and that's kind of where we've been held up. We have not executed a development agreement. Um, we've blown by the permitting date that was assigned in that development agreement. If you recall the February meetings, there was a great deliberation with regard to that date and I think that's why staff felt like at this point, this needed to come back before you, um, to explain the circumstances, to, uh, let the public know what was going on with the property and, uh, perhaps create a little bit of urgency with regard to redevelopment of the property. So, thanks.
So we don't have a signed developer's agreement and there are a couple of documents or items outstanding, is that?
That is correct.
That's kind of the current status?
I, I won't and I don't believe I can execute that developer's agreement until the surety has been provided and reviewed to the city attorney's satisfaction.
Okay.
Is there a timeline on that outstanding piece?
We have been told we should receive it this week. It was, it, it, the timeline contemplated in the developer's agreement was April 1st, that we would be able to, we would have the developer's agreements executed and a build permit issued.
Are there any questions? Greg?
So just to recap what I heard, um, the developer's agreement is probably going to be about six months behind schedule from the original April 1st date, it sounds like?
Hmm, probably a month and a half. Um, we're, April 1st was the intended permitting date. Um, we're at, what, mid-May?
Okay, so roughly, okay. Does this delay the project overall or is this just a phase one delay and all the rest of it will be on schedule?
Um, progress has been made on demoing, which would have needed to occur before they could complete work on it. So progress has been made. I, I think we are behind schedule based on where we would like to be. Um, he does have, there was, the developer has 18 months from that April 1st date approximately for total completion.
Right.
Um, so obviously we would have liked to have a, a, a full building permit with, um, all the adequate information and the exterior plan and everything to Troy's satisfaction to be able to issue that build permit. So we're behind schedule. Um, there's still adequate time to complete the project within that 18 months, but, um, we, we would urge, we would like to see some urgency, um, to complete the project.
And what would be the, the next phase that we might get an update here at city council?
Uh, if we, I would say, well, if the developer's agreement is not signed and a build permit is, is not issued, it's going to appear on every agenda for the city council until, um, either that occurs or the city council chooses to take, uh, other action. Assuming that the developer's agreement gets executed and a build permit is issued, um, I don't know that I can give you set dates on when that would occur, but it would be, um, Troy could certainly be available to provide updates on progress on the project. The PDD overlay in ordinance requires the project to be completed, um, within two, within two years. The developer's agreement will require it to be completed within 18 months of April 1st. If there's not adequate activity on a build permit, it then expires after six months. Um, so if we were approaching that six-month period where there had been no activity, um, Troy would, could.
Tornado warning. Saw that tick on my, yeah, I know, but I saw it coming. It came through that we were under the.
I was listening.
That answered my question, thank you.
[laughing]
Not the alarms, but what you, you, you had said, thank you.
So my phone said tornado warning. Can anyone verify that? The, whether we need to, uh, close the meeting and take shelter or?
Sirens haven't gone off here though.
Sirens haven't gone off, all right. Well, let's continue until we get our local sirens that, if that would happen.
Well, warning.
Warning.
If people are comfortable.
People are texting.
If people are comfortable, let's continue until we get a, a local siren, um, that tells us not to, I guess.
I'm good.
All right.
We're okay?
Okay.
Okay.
Um, so I guess just as a follow-up then to what Greg was asking, if I was hearing this correctly, what we still need, um, in order to execute the developer's agreement is the exterior building plan, uh, surety bond and our attorney's review of that and then the recording of the easements, um, that have been established. Is that, is that the list of what's still outstanding?
Um, if the easements are approved, I don't really care if they're
Okay.
Recorded at this point in time.
Okay.
So long as we have an, an agreement. We have not executed them. Yeah, there's your alarm.
Okay. There's our siren, so, um.
So I move to take a, uh, 15-minute recess. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Raise your hands. Okay, we'll take a 15-minute recess.
Okay.
Okay, uh, it's 8:31. We will go back on the record for the city council meeting of May 7th after a brief, um, recess for tornado warning. Uh, so we were discussing the agenda item, letter D, which is the update and possible action on the Cottage Hotel at 265 South Main Street. Um, and Greg, you had just asked some questions. Did you, were your questions addressed?
My questions were addressed, yeah.
Okay. Are there any other questions from council members? So, um, Drake, do you need an action from us tonight?
I think since it's, the approved development agreement had the April 1st deadline, it'd be appropriate for the city council to adopt a motion with a new deadline if you want to extend that. If you're not interested in extending it, you have the option to rescind approval of the development agreement because it has not been executed. Um, so you can, I would formally set a new deadline. I would encourage that if you don't want to rescind.
Okay, would anyone like to make a motion?
Absent a motion, we'll just keep bringing it back and for updates if it doesn't progress to execution and issuance of a build permit.
Can I just have a clarification on the, the one, the outstanding piece is expected to be in this coming week? Is that the one outstanding piece before then the developer's agreement can be?
Executed?
Executed?
Yes, for the developer's agreement to be executed, the surety is the outstanding piece. We have not full, we have, we received items, but we haven't completed review of them. We don't anticipate issues with what we have received. Um, the build permit will get issued then once Troy has received the exterior building plan. So we have state-approved plans for the interior. So, yes, we'll be able to execute when we receive surety.
Um, just a follow-up then, do you need, uh, council, uh, approval of a modified date before you can execute the developer's agreement?
If, I mean, absent, absent or rescinding, I'll take that as the council's acquiescence to the delay. So, no, I don't need it, but the council can certainly make their will known by imposing one.
Okay.
Can I ask a question? Um, with regard to the development agreement, once it's enacted, then does that start the 18-month timeline or did the 18-month timeline start on April 1st?
April 1st.
Okay, so all we're looking for is just a little bit of a permission for, um, the delay of whatever information is coming and then hopefully by the next time we come together, we'll have that started and we can, we can proceed from there. Is that what I'm understanding?
Uh, if you don't receive, if you don't rescind the action and we receive the necessary documents to execute the developer's agreement and for Troy to issue the build permit, you won't need to see the item again until or unless there is a future issue. So, assuming we get it, you won't, it won't come back to you.
Are you good?
Mm-hmm.
So I guess I'm good with, um, with allowing this to come back in front of council in two weeks if that's not fulfilled and then there's always the risk that some, the council may take action at that point if it doesn't happen within the next two weeks.
Yeah, otherwise I was going to suggest we add a 10-day, the 17th or the 24th, uh, two weeks from today, 24th as a formal date of requirement, but we can fulfill it either way by, I think the action that you're mentioning, Greg.
So we would have this as, uh, a continuing agenda item for our next council, council agenda in two weeks.
Yeah, if, if it's not executed, if it is, I'll update the council in my report.
Okay. Okay, anything further from council members on this item? Okay, that's, uh, we're finished with that agenda item and I hope Mr. Luce that you're able to complete the remaining items so that we can, uh, you can keep moving forward with this project.
[inaudible]
Okay, um, if there are no objections, I would like to move, um, a couple of items up in the agenda. So I would like to go next to, um, Resolution 24 dash 34, which is for tid number nine, and then go to Resolution 24 dash 35, which is for the, uh, survey around Rock Lake. Are any objections? Okay, so next will be, um, Resolution 24 dash 34, which is the proposed project plan and boundary for tid number nine. Um, Madison, could you read that title for us, please?
Sure. Proving boundary and project plan for tax incremental district number nine, City of Lake Mills in Jefferson County, Wisconsin.
Thank you. And why don't we go ahead and have, um, our consulting planner give the presentation and then we can do, uh, motions after that. So, welcome Dustin.
Uh, thank you. Caught me just a little off guard, so I need to.
Oh, sorry. [laughing] I guess I could have written a tornado warning. I could have given you a heads up.
No, no, I just need to, uh, I just need to connect into the system real quick here so I can share. Everything's up on my end. I just, uh, I didn't want to bog down anything on, on that end. So just give me one second. Here we go. I'm going to start on page six of the document, which is to, um, which is the, uh, the boundary map itself. Um, so of the, of the document, not the PDF, just for following along. Um, so this tid is, um, tid number nine, uh, all of them are numbered sequentially. This is the former tid number two area, which is the industrial park area. Um, I will zoom in a little bit so you can see. Um, the proposed, uh, tid number nine is an industrial tid, which means that, uh, it is intended for industrial development, that at least 50% of it will remain, um, uh, industrial, uh, zoning and uses, um, over the life of the tid. Um, that doesn't mean it has to be solely industrial. Um, the total tid, um, boundary that's showing here in the, in the blue, uh, is about 250 acres. It does overlay the existing tid number six. You can kind of see a dashed line on the kind of southern end of it here. Um, tid number six has, uh, the Horizon Development and it has J-Mac and it extended south. Um, that extends, tid six was extended to the, to the south and to the, um, west. Uh, when we were looking at, um, some potential manufacturing development on the, what is that, the school district site, uh, that's about six, seven years ago, I think that that happened. Um, but again, it, it's really along American Way, Enterprise Drive, uh, and Industrial Drive and then extends what would be south along CP Avenue, extended south of the, uh, Glacial Drummond Trail and what would be, uh, the lands, um, that are owned by the school district to the north of, uh, St. Paul's and along, um, unimproved, uh, unsavened lane. Um, this tid is proposed to be a, what is a pay-go or a pay-as-you-go type tid. Um, that does not mean that there wouldn't potentially be borrowings, um, at the direction of, of the council, but in essence, it says that projects wouldn't be undertaken unless a developer comes forth with a project, um, and a development agreement is executed with that, uh, developer. Um, so, uh, that could be a variety. We'll talk in a second about different, um, uh, public improvement projects that that could entail. Um, this boundary was evaluated by the Plan Commission. A public hearing was held at the last Plan Commission meeting as required, um, by statute. Um, it has been viewed by the Joint Review Board, which is your taxing jurisdictions, at an initial meeting. No action is taken at that meeting. Should the council decide that it wants to approve, um, this tax increment district creation, uh, and boundary, it would go to the Joint Review Board, um, on, uh, Monday. Uh, that meeting has been scheduled, um, just in anticipation of a potential action here. Um, but again, uh, ultimately, um, uh, all the decisions are in the hands of, of the council. Um, any questions kind of on the boundary? I'm going to hit the high points here on some things. I'm going to back up, um, a page to, um, uh, to, to page five of the, of the document. Um, this is the 12% test. This is a statutory requirement that says, uh, a municipality cannot have more than 12% of its total equalized value tied up in, uh, tid increment. Um, so we are showing you as of 2024 values, um, $900 million in total equalized value in the community. That 12% test would be 100 and, about 108 million, uh, dollars. Um, we show you in table two here of all your current tids, um, so, uh, three through eight. Tid number two was closed a couple of years ago. Um, that was the old, uh, industrial park tid. Um, so you can see that currently you have about seven and a half percent of equalized value tied up in tax increment financing. Um, and again, it is not total value, it's increment value, the created, uh, value, um, over the base. Um, our table three is really the satisfaction of the 12% test. If this was to be created, um, would you still be able to stay under that 12% threshold? Uh, this is showing you that the assessed value of those tid nine lands that we showed you in that boundary is about $10 million. Um, the, the reason it's a little higher than you would normally anticipate is you would have a green, in a, like a farm field type, uh, development, is because we do have Horizon, um, manufacturing in there. J-Mac is in there. Um, there are other, um, uh, industrial, built industrial lands, um, within the district. Um, so again, you have a $10 million, uh, base value. Um, so kind of removing that, it would still mean you'd have about $30 million in capacity. So kind of removing that, it would still mean you'd have about $30 million in capacity available. That's about 3.3% of capacity available. I know that sounds precarious, you're getting to, you know, close to the 12%, but when you go back and look at TID numbers three and four, they were created in 2006. They're going to be coming off the books in the next couple of years. You know, they, there are things that get monitored on an annual basis by the staff and by the Joint Review Board. When those, any outstanding debts there are satisfied, those TIDS can be closed or need to be closed, you know, in conjunction with their statutory timeline. So again, we would see about 3.5 odd percent coming off the books in a couple of years as well. Any questions on the 12% criteria? So development assumptions, we do a little bit of crystal balling here. I'm going to flip down a few pages, and I apologize for me trying to watch this at home. So the development assumptions, we worked with the city staff on this and your financial consultant, Ailer.
What page are you on?
I am on the, I'm sorry, it is the bottom of page 23 of the document.
Thank you.
Absolutely. So we were looking at a variety of manufacturing projects, expansions to some existing developments within the boundary area that you could see there as phases one and phase two. We were looking at a potential new manufacturing development on the city-owned land south of Light and Water Building. And then we were looking at some potential multifamily projects that have been planned for that area that could use some roadway extensions maybe in some areas. But south of Wallace Street, excuse me, the Wallace Park has been a multifamily development that we're anticipating sometime over the life of this TID coming into play. And then there was another, some properties that we're kind of looking at, a transition area from some single family to the industrial park that could be some senior housing areas. So working with Ailer's and putting together some development values. As you can see, we're looking at construction years ranging from 2024, generally out to about 2029 or 2030. So total, again, this is crystal balling. We do evaluate these things on an annual basis. But there is the potential for about $50 million in new value to be created out there. The pay-go TID is important here because you are not obligating yourself to any expenses without having a revenue stream coming in, right? So it is something that is monitored closely. And as I said, projects would be undertaken only at the discretion of the council with an executed development agreement. I'll move back up to our project map, which is on page 19, just to show you what some of the potential public improvement projects that could occur within the district. So working with Stran Associates, your consulting engineer and the city staff, put together a project map here. You can see that the blue outline is the proposed district. Projects there, the most significant project being highlighted here is the completion and extension of CP Avenue to the south and then aligning with future unsaven lane and providing a direct connection out to South 80, South 80 or Main Street. Some other projects that have been highlighted in there could include some pedestrian improvements for asphalt paths and pavement. The, potentially some specific utility projects could be undertaken as necessary. The extension of Brookstone Drive to the south to eventually serve development to the south there. Our projects kind of within the TID itself. The statutes do allow municipalities to undertake projects outside of that TID boundary. Some qualifiers in there, they need to be within a half a mile of the TID boundary. So the orange kind of dashed boundary you're seeing there is that half-mile limit. And then the projects undertaken need to have a benefit to the TID itself. I think the most notable that we're showing there is the completion of American Way at Harvey Road. That little bit of Stubbs Street extension certainly provides some relief, another access point to the industrial park. And then obviously for those residents that live over there. Hand in hand with this, on page 17 of the document, is an actual detailed list provided by Stran Associates of those projects that could be undertaken and their anticipated costs. So again, projects are not undertaken unless approved by the council, of course. Projects would not be anticipated to be undertaken unless there is company development to ensure that there's a revenue stream. Those are things that you would evaluate on an annual basis or a case-by-case basis, depending upon the development project coming in. Creation of a district and identifying any projects does not obligate the city to expending any dollars. I want to make sure that that's well understood. But we do have to have statutorily potential projects that could be undertaken should the municipality decide to do so. So we can't just have a blank page. We tried to have a very realistic evaluation of necessary infrastructure projects that benefit the TID, that meet the BUT4 test, you know, why are lands vacant? Why are we not seeing the type of development we had hoped to see in this area? Some of the projects that we've outlined but don't have a specific cost to in this area, as you're aware, you're either blessed with low land or high water in some of these areas in the industrial park. So there has been the need to do some isolated wetland filling. This was notable when Horizon, in TID number six, when Horizon built their first project. And then there was a very robust permitting process with the DNR and Army Corps of Engineers to do specific isolated wetland fills. There are still some low areas throughout the boundary area that we're showing. It is one of the significant reasons why certain properties have not developed, right? There is certainly a lot of infrastructure available, but there are low lands. There are costs associated with doing those wetland fills. And of course, they are evaluated on a case-by-case basis, but those are eligible costs should the community decide to undertake it. It is a hindrance for a developer coming in, knowing just to get land, I can turn shovels in, I have to absorb this cost of dealing with a wetland fill and paying for wetland credits elsewhere. So those are eligible costs that would be evaluated as a part of this project. Any questions on those elements? I'm going to flip ahead to page.
Dustin?
Nope, I'm sorry, of course.
You mentioned a revenue stream, and I'm noticing that a couple of the projects are like really minor, such as the gravel over by James J. or finishing the gravel over by, it looks like, Elsie Maze. Can you help me understand the, and even the one that's leading out from the end of American Way to Harvey? What is the revenue stream that we're anticipating? Or what are we looking for when we talk about revenue stream there?
So that would be future development within the district itself. So that could be new development on some of the vacant properties or underperforming properties, right? New industrial development. It could be expansions of existing businesses within the district. They could be looking to undertake a large expansion. So the, a large expansion obviously has new value. That new value would be taxed at your normal rate. But those taxes go into a segregated account for the TID itself. And those dollars, you're not using general levy dollars, you're using TID dollars to pay for those potential projects should you decide to undertake them. Some of the projects in there are quality of life projects, bicycle and pedestrian improvements, right? For connectivity, getting people from neighborhoods, safe connections from neighborhoods to the Glacial Drummond Trail. Also could be utilized by people working within the industrial park themselves. So it does have kind of dual benefit there. But those projects, again, have been, I'll say earmarked, but that doesn't mean they're specifically programmed as an expenditure. So everything does come back to, is the district cash flowing as we need it to be before you start undertaking projects? Some projects may be undertaken in conjunction with a development proposal. Some others, which are larger, as you know that you have, you're generating increment, I'll say the CP Avenue project, could potentially have a borrowing, but you would have a dedicated revenue stream, not on the general levy, to pay for those improvements. So that's the important part, that the TID.
Let's take a step back.
Yeah.
Okay, so when you form a TID, okay, you see the map that's shown. It identifies a number of properties that are going to be a part of this TID, TID number nine. Those properties, at the time the TID is created, they have a basis, a valuation on that day. They enter the TID with that basis. When there is improvement, that basis will increase, right? You go from a $400,000 individual property to a $500,000 individual property. The basis increases by $100,000. That $100,000 is taxed, it's assessed as property tax. And the increment that is created, the new tax that is levied on that increase is deemed increment. That increment is captured by the TID, and then that's the revenue source. That new source of money can be utilized to do projects within the TID. It could be utilized to encourage a developer to do a project. It could be utilized for the public infrastructure that Dustin is discussing, discussing the extension of CP Avenue to 89, the extension of American Way to Harvey. But that is kind of the foundation. You enter into the TID at X value. Anything that's created, we're deeming Y. The tax that's created off of Y is increment. That increment is captured by the TID and then can be expended for appropriate projects. That is the revenue source.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Excellent explanation, Dan. The only thing I would add to that is, he talked about the base value. Again, all properties within the boundary continue to pay their taxes as they normally would. That base value still is paid to all of the taxing jurisdictions. It's the new value and new increment generated goes into a sequestered fund for just undertaking projects that are identified in the project plan within the district.
For the duration of the TID.
For the duration of the TID, which is why the Joint Review Board is your taxing jurisdictions. They do have to agree to this, right? Because they are going to forego projected value and taxes for the life of the TID. So with that, this page that I'm showing you here, which is page 24 of the document, this is our projection worksheet. And this goes back to that crystal balling on development assumptions. Trying to look out really more than five or six years really gets challenging. But the development assumptions that I walked through earlier is what comes into play here. I'm going to try to zoom in a little bit more here. But in essence, we have our construction year in our left column, and that's that value that is created in each of those years. We use, we're not using any inflation value here. So we use very, it's a very conservative pro forma. I think we all know that there's inflation each year. Value, property values generally go up. We do not make wholesale assumptions of 6%, 7%, 8%. We are holding steady on the initial value created here. And we show that there's a construction year, the following year it gets a value, and then that second year is when it actually generates revenue. It takes about two years for you to get from a project happening before it's putting money in the coffers. It's an important thing to understand, that it's not immediate. There is a little bit of a delay there. The orange column in the center is showing you, based on that value added, what those taxes would be generated for this district. We are using your current mill rate and holding that steady. We are not making projections moving forward. So that center column says, based on potentially $50 million, about $50 million in new value being created over the life of the TID, it could generate about $17 million in new tax increment. Again, we are not advocating in here that you would do a wholesale borrowing to undertake projects. You would wait until you have projects underway, development agreements executed before you would undertake certain projects or in conjunction with their projects. This is a pro forma that usually gets evaluated annually as a part of a statutory process, but also a health of the TID process. Where are we at? I'm looking at Sam here on, you know, what is the health of the TID? What can it afford to do? And as you start looking at capital improvement projects that are identified within the TID, what can we undertake? What do we need to undertake to attract new development to these sites? When you are negotiating with developers, what can you afford to do based on their project? And perhaps what's in the bank for the TID? But again, you are not obligated to do anything should you not feel that you want to.
Excuse me, I have a question.
Yes.
When you are looking, thinking about the projects or the possible industrial businesses that have been a TID, do they have their own set of like standards or business requirements? So then, as an example, they have limitations on their effluent? Or we would want to attract certain businesses that don't draw a lot of energy? Or I don't know, is that part, does a TID have like guidelines or requirements or structure like that with something of this nature?
Decline to provide an incentive if they requested one, but it doesn't prohibit. And it requires over 50% of the property to be industrial. That's the requirement of the TID. That's really as far as it goes. You choose what you want to incentivize or not. And through that, presumably, if it's passing the BUT4 test, the development wouldn't occur without it if they're saying that they needed it, so.
But for TID assistance, the development wouldn't occur.
Okay.
It does not sidestep any other responsibilities of business to meet any statutory requirements, operational requirements, right? This does not preclude any of those things. It just helps you decide what projects might you want to undertake that you think are necessary to make these properties more desirable? And what you can do, because it is the most powerful economic development tool we have in the state of Wisconsin, to potentially incentivize development should you choose to do so. Could be a developer coming in with new outside employees, right? Increasing the employment base here. It could be just a much-needed specific user that you're looking at. It could be to, as I said, offset some of the environmental constraints that are on some of these properties that have inhibited their ability to develop.
So you could, in the example you gave, for example, a, an entity that was coming in that had a heavy impact on a wastewater treatment plant, you could use TIF to incentivize them to pretreat their waste. And so that would lessen the impact that it has on the public system. So that would be an appropriate use of TIF funds to ensure that the development still occurs. But we are saying, we need to help you with this extraordinary cost that would otherwise not be necessary except for our constraints.
In the past, in TID two, TID dollars had been expended for regional stormwater detention or to solve flooding problems and to, again, make properties more desirable for development. It eliminates that responsibility from an individual developer that the city has taken that on to try to incentivize. And that's one method of incentivization.
Thank you.
So Mary's question made me think of something that, for some reason, I've never thought of in the past. But how would a non-tax entity fit into a TID like a school district or a church?
They don't contribute, and in rare instances, I've only seen them incentivized. It's not, we make it clear in the project plan that, you know, the driver here is tax, right?
So they're basically taking up land within our TID, but there's no tax, there's no tax increase based on that?
They're valued at zero, they'll remain at zero.
Okay.
As long as the use continues.
The tax increment district here doesn't preclude, like the school district, from building on their property, right? They can continue to do so. The issue with including their lands was, in the past, they had contemplated not utilizing that property and it becoming available for manufacturing development. That didn't come to fruition. But also, there are important infrastructure needs on their unsaven lane, that connection. And so including those lands enables us to undertake, potentially undertake, a project adjacent to those lands.
Thank you.
The last large table in here that I'll talk about is. Um, the last large, um, table in here that I'll talk about is bottom of page 28 of the, of the document. Uh, oh, we have a cash flow projection here, I'm sorry. This was from an earlier iteration that's going to be removed because we are, there was a potential borrowing, um, that was evaluated as a part of the project plan, but this is anticipated to be removed because it is solely focusing on a pay-go at this time. But again, it doesn't preclude you from doing any borrowings, just the, uh, public hearing draft had shown, um, uh, this specific table being in there, um, so we didn't remove it altogether. And our last table, um, which is on page 28 of the document, um, it shows the potential impact to those taxing jurisdictions on an annual basis, based on their current mill rate. Um, so we are showcasing that, how that breakdown of taxes, um, would have been provided to each of the taxing jurisdictions. Um, again, this is based on the development assumptions. Those are, um, I'll say flexible on a, on an annual basis. Um, we do evaluate them, but we do want to make sure that we are satisfying, um, statutory requirements to show potential impact to those taxing jurisdictions over a 20-year The last few pages of the document, starting on page 38, kind of highlights the summary, um, satisfaction of the BUT-4 test findings related to that. Again, um, you know, under normal market conditions, those lands would have developed. They obviously have not for a variety of reasons. Some can be connectivity issues, some can be some underground utility issues, some can be wetland fill needs, uh, in that area, some could just be, um, to incentivize, development needs to be incentivized because high price of labor, high price of construction costs, et cetera. So again, um, it's our opinion, uh, that, um, the BUT-4 test is satisfied because those lands have underperformed or remain vacant. With that, that's the bulk of what I have here. I can certainly answer any other questions. There is a prepared resolution, which is very long, um, but it satisfies the statutory requirements should you decide, um, uh, to approve this project plan.
Thank you, Dustin. Are there any additional questions for Dustin or other staff?
Plan Commission did recommend approval.
I have a question.
Greg.
Has this been reviewed by the Economic Development Commission?
Uh, we had a initial, before we started this process, Dustin came in and did update them on, um, you know, potential developments that we could see in the industrial park, the need for the expiring life of the current TID there, and the benefits of creating a new TID, and the general consensus was begin that statutory process and, you know, utilize what tools you have to incentivize development, industrial development within the park. So, um, they were, they were the initial step. They were the first meeting we had. Um, they didn't take formal action, but the general consensus was, um, we, we support this concept and think you should move forward.
Okay. So, in general, I, I, I like what we got here on TID 9. It's, it, it's good for the community. It, it has a lot of projects that would, would help the community, a lot of economic things that would, would help the community as well, maybe provide some more jobs. So, in general, I'm very much in favor of this, but we have a board that I think that needs to review this before we, we move forward from a council standpoint. The Economic Development Commission doesn't have very many meetings. We've been looking for ways to, uh, to allow them to be a part of the city government and figure out ways to, to get them involved, and this is something that in the past, we did take to the Economic Commission. And, um, I would move that we, uh, that we table Resolution 24 dash 34 and allow the Economic Development Commission to review this TID and make a recommendation back to City Council.
I, I want to be clear, they were supportive of pursuing a TIF, a new TIF district in the industrial park. It, that was, it was on, they, they discussed it at a meeting in December of 2023.
If I can add, we did-
The project plan may not have been in front of them, but they were supportive of a new TIF district in the industrial park.
Key elements of the project plan were presented to them. Um, a draft boundary that you're seeing here, they, they didn't propose any other changes to staff. They did review the, um, project map, they did review the project's list and costs associated with them, and, and again, I would say that they were, they were very supportive of that. Statutorily, um, they don't need to approve this, they don't, it's a plan, commission, council issue, but I can understand if that's the direction you want to run it.
Yeah, I don't think that this is something that needs to pass necessarily tonight. I think a month from now is fine, so.
We are, we do have a ticking clock.
Okay.
So, there are statutory requirements that, um, you have a certain number of days as a council to act. Um, I'll have to go back, it's, we don't get to the end of it, I think it's 45 days from the public hearing date, and then the Joint Review Board has a certain number of dates following the council action. So, I'll be honest, I am not prepared to say where that deadline is for being, you know, for you needing to act before we would have to go back and have another public hearing.
Okay. So I made a motion.
I have a question. Is that okay to ask the question despite there being a motion?
We should, we should wait for a second.
Okay.
Is there a second on, um, Greg's motion to table this item until we get a, um, to allow the Economic Development Commission to review this?
Correct.
Uh, for purposes of discussion, I will second the motion. Michelle?
Um, and I'm, I'm, I might be taking us backwards in this conversation, so I apologize for that. Um, I just wanted to understand, with this TID, the way it is set up, is this all planned business zoned then? Is that, or is it possible to zone indifferent?
I apologize, but the, the discussion needs to center around the merits of tabling.
Sorry. Okay. I shall hold.
Steve?
I'll just reiterate what Justin was saying is that we did, um, Economic Board did basically see this map and kind of walk through and talk to it, but there wasn't anything to really take action on. They were just looking to see if we would support this. So it was presented and we did say, yeah, we liked the idea and we'd supported it, but there was no formal action.
So Greg, what, um, what sort of review would you expect to, or input would, might you expect to receive from the Economic Development Commission? And also, I think you said that that had been the past procedure that you were aware-
When I was on the Economic Board for several years, the, the TIDS would come before the Economic Board. I basically would, would think that the document that we saw tonight would be presented to the, to the commission, and, um, they would be able to make a recommendation to council that this is something that, that fits along their lines and that they would like to see action on.
Is there any other discussion on the motion to table? Okay, can we have a roll call vote on the motion to, um, I was looking at the, for the resolution number here, to, uh, table Resolution 24 dash 34 to allow the Economic Development Commission to review and make a recommendation to council?
Ms. Quednow?
No.
Mr. Fields?
No.
Ms. Curler?
No.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Ms. Schmager?
No.
Motion fails 1-4.
Okay, so, uh, we are back to the Resolution 24 dash 34. Um, are there, and is there any further discussion or questions? Michelle, you want to go back to your question?
Okay, I will restate my question again. Is it all planned district zoning, or can it be zoned for other things?
It, it can absolutely be zoned for other things. Again, 50% of the land area does need to be zoned, um, for industrial purposes, so that can be, uh, your plant industrial, your general industrial, or your, um, heavy industrial districts. Um, other lands can stay zoned. Um, uh, we have some R312 in this area, um, and, uh, some could be institutional, should the need be there for the, in this case, the school district properties.
Okay. Thanks.
Um, I have a question about the, I guess, just sort of the mechanics of, um, TID 9 overlaying TID 6. So if there's a project, uh, that's proposed, uh, you know, industry expansion, for example, that's in 6, which would then also be in 9, like, where do the funds go? Where does the increment go?
It's a great question. In this case, the proposed TID 9 overlays TID 6 perfectly, okay? So we don't have some lands that might only be in TID 6 and some that are overlaid to 9. Um, so the value, if, should TID 9 be created, the value of TID 6 gets frozen. Um, it's still, all those entities still pay the taxes that they were paying last year, um, to all the taxing jurisdictions or into TID, TID number 6. Any new value created goes into TID 9. The, um-
So even though TID 6 still exists, it wouldn't be generating any new increment once 9 is, is created and approved?
That is, that is correct. Um, there's a, I'll, I'll say some accounting things that need to occur, working with the assessor on way things get coded, and working with Sam, uh, on, on things that happen there, but, um, it is, um, very common to, uh, to overlay TIDS, um, specifically because of the timeline issues. TID 6 only has about 10 years of life left, which sounds like a lot, but when you're trying to recapture on larger, um, infrastructure projects, it's not a lot of time, uh, to generate, um, uh, the, the increment that you may need for some projects.
Any other questions or comments from council? Okay, seeing none, uh, can we have a roll call, please, on Resolution 24 dash 34, which is approving the boundary and project plan for tax incremental District Number 9 in the city of Lake Mills?
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Ms. Schmager?
Aye.
Ms. Quednow?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And thank you for the TID 101, since most of us haven't been on the council to create a TID in the past, so appreciate that background. Okay, uh, next item that I had proposed to move up is Resolution 24 dash 35, which is regarding a, uh, survey around Rock Lake. Madison, would you read that title for us, please?
Resolution authorizing the use of council contingency funds for the surveying of up to 40 community sites around Rock Lake by the DNR for the purposes of studying the effects of a change in the DNR water level order.
Um, I'm going to pause here for a point of order. I do not have in my notes that we, um, that we had a motion and a second on the last agenda item.
I thought, uh, Steve Fields and Mary Schmager motioned and seconded.
To adopt the TID? I mean, we voted.
We didn't, we voted.
I think we just did the presentation and then we were-
Yeah, I said, let's hold the, the motion until later.
Yeah, I believe we did the presentation, there was no motion. I don't have one either, looking at it.
Oh, I missed that then.
Yeah, so let's, let's go back to that, so, um-
Well, I'll make a motion-
Apologize, so we just return to-
It was a long reading.
Resolution 24 dash 34. So we need a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 24 34, the proposed project plan and boundary for tax incremental District Number 9.
I'll second.
Motion by Ms. Schmager, seconded by Mr. Fields. Any additional discussion? Okay, then let's repeat the roll call vote on Resolution 24 dash 34.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Ms. Schmager?
Aye.
Ms. Quednow?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you.
That was a good catch.
Yeah. I thought, did I not write it down, or maybe we didn't have it? So anyway, don't want to have any procedural problems moving that forward. Okay, so we're back to Resolution 24 dash 35, which Madison read out for, so is there a motion on 24 dash 35?
I move, uh, to move forward Resolution 24 35, authorizes the use of council contingency to fund the survey of up to 40 plant and community sites near and around Rock Lake as determined by the Department of Natural Resources.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Schmager, seconded by Ms. Quednow. Um, can I have some staff input first on this one?
Sorry, I'm trying to pull it up, my-
Yeah, it's okay.
Computer's having some trouble.
Sorry, we were bouncing around a little bit.
Um, okay, I've got it now. Um, you'll recall, the DNR sent a letter, uh, to the city, um, detailing the types of, of studies and, um, information that they would need before they would consider any petition for a change in the water level order of Rock Lake. Jefferson County Land and Water volunteered to assist on many of those matters at, uh, at no cost to the city in partnership with the DNR. The, uh, remaining outstanding, uh, work was the, um, cert, was the surveying of the Rock Lake area. So we had a conversation with the DNR, um, and expressed our, our concerns that just trying to get a straight line, what they, they had originally requested, would be very difficult with the terrain and may not really produce any useful information, and so they kind of flipped the order of operations, as they called it, and said that they'll be going out with land and water, and they'll get GPS coordinates and identify plant communities that would be, that may be impacted by changes in Rock Lake water levels, and then they would send those coordinates to the surveyors who would go out and survey those 30 to 40 specific sites. So that cost, um, for Strand to go out is $4,600. Um, that would be a not-to-exceed number. If they only, if the DNR only sent 30 community sites, it would be less than that. So that covers up to 40 plant community sites to be surveyed to satisfy the requirements of the DNR that they outlined in that letter. Um, this isn't a planned expense, so it, the, the resolution does, um, also authorize use of council contingency funds to, to fund it.
Thank you. Steve?
I think last time when we first moved forward with this, we talked about taking a few extra shots around the lake to check the actual water level and high watermark. What residents thought was normal water level, was that included in this then?
Uh, it won't be in the 4,600, but we'll still be able to do it. We, we have, um, we're also gonna talk to the original dam designer and confirm, and we have talked to them, confirm what the, what data was used at the original creation of it, but we, yes, we, we will be able to shoot some additional sites just to, for verification purposes. We don't have any reason to believe that any of the, the data's wrong, but we can confirm it.
Thank you.
So just a follow-up on that, then, I'm assuming that there were, are some benchmarks that were used for the construction of the dam, and then hopefully those would be able to be recovered and, and used for-
We still have them.
Okay. Fantastic. Greg?
Oh, that was just like, I'm keeping my notes open. Okay. Um, I guess I do have a question. Do we have a, maybe a copy of the, of the work scope that would be happening here? It sounds like survey, what are we surveying, for what reason, and, and what are we looking for? I guess, I don't fully understand that at this point.
Yeah, so the, it'll largely be dictated by the DNR, the D, the, the plant communities that the DNR identifies, which we don't know what those are yet because they haven't gone out and provided us with the GPS coordinates. So they'll, they're going to actually go out, find these plant communities that may be impacted by a change in the water level order. They're going to have GPS locators on them, they're going to put the actual line, longitude and latitude down, and then send that information to the surveyor, and then they will go to those specific spots and shoot survey data on those specific spots, rather than trying to create a line, like an 828 or 829-foot line across Rock Lake, which would be- to create a line, like an 828 or 829 foot line across Rock Lake, which would be very, very difficult to do. So they will, by knowing exactly what, they are looking at what's being impacted with those GPS coordinates, whatever, I can't remember the names of types of, of plant communities that they might be, but I know Land and Water is aware of certain ones that they may be looking at. They're just going to go to those specific spots that are identified and provide elevation data, survey data on where those are and how a higher lake earlier may affect that, or lower lake later.
So by shooting, that's referencing, taking pictures? What, what does that mean?
A, a full survey of those spots. So what elevations they're at, where they, where they're situated, and how they interact with those water levels.
So they're shooting elevation data of some sort?
Well, yeah. They're trying to find out how changes in water levels would impact those specific spots. So would allowing, based on their growing patterns, based on what they require to be successful, would changing the water level order have an adverse effect on those communities? That's my understanding of what they're trying to gain by requiring this information.
Okay.
So as I recall, the letter from DNR had a map that showed the South Basin of Marsh Lake, some people call it, and that was kind of the focal area, right? And so it sounds to me, from what you're describing, that DNR would sort of be doing the study, except for the elevations. They would be identifying the plant communities and their horizontal boundaries, and then our surveyor would come in to identify the elevation so that then they can analyze the effect of water levels. Am I kind of...
I believe so, yes.
Okay. Steve?
If you think about using your GPS map, basically, they're just going to go out there and drop a bunch of pins, and then our surveyors got to go find them pins and then document that area.
Document the elevation.
That's what they're going to do, is they're just going to go out and drop pins for them to go find. If that makes sense that way?
Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Well, I'd like to make a comment. You know, I am, first of all, very grateful for Patricia Cicero and Jefferson County Land Water and the DNR for, for forking up and, and really supporting all of the other studies that the DNR is requiring for the water level order. If, I just want to refresh, we are talking about four inches. I mean, this isn't a lot of, of, of water. And so it is, you're asking, I thought your question is right on the mark, Greg. I'm not certain what conclusions they will or will not draw that will help them and help us to well-understand whether a movement earlier, whether it's two inches, you know, every few weeks, or one inch every other, whatever, whatever change to help achieve the summer minimum, I'm not sure what conclusion they will draw that will help them and help all of us decide whether that's smart for all of the complexities of the lake. So that's the plants and the fish and the recreation and the shoreline and all of the things. So I, I am in full support of the study because I'm a data person, and I think the more we learn and the more we can grow, the more we understand, the smarter we are in making sure that lake is healthy in all of the definition of healthy. And one of the things that I think might be really important to do concurrently while we're doing those multiple DNR studies, is to really assess, get, pull out those, I understand there's these water level ledgers, these old binders from years ago of water levels, and there were drought periods, and to really understand, if we look at multiple years of history, this lake is, and we've probably have get, data gathered for multiple years, we, we have, it's a, the ecosystem has been volatile. I can't imagine with the board system that we were, we were, we, we know more now, which can be good or bad. We're more precise now, I should say. Our precision has gone up, but the world in, in the world of water, in my viewpoint, isn't a precision science. It's, it's a variable science. But you can learn a lot by understanding what has happened and, and, and in the past history. And I know we're moving forward and the times are changing with, with the weather patterns, and so sometimes looking back doesn't necessarily give you all the answers for the future. But I think really studying in concurrent what, what we have seen over the course of the years, and I, and it's a little bit of confirming the watermark when the dam went in, but it's also looking at the water levels and maybe how drought behaved back then, and when waters raised and how they were raised and lowered back then might be helpful for us to gain more insight. And so it's just a perspective I have that I think, I, I, you know, how to go after it, we'll have to maybe work with the Joint Rock Lake Committee, or possibly the Rock Lake Improvement Association, to, to find way, people hours, to kind of figure out how to understand this. But I think it's just as important as the studies the DNR is looking at today, because it's a point in time. And they're going to GPS map this, and I'm not sure how you decide the, I don't know, I'm, I'm really anxious to learn how they're going to make a decision and help us to learn about what we have going on with the lake as it relates to the water level. So I'm, I'm in support, but I'm just have this secondary concurrent interest that I think would might be very helpful for us as we try to understand, especially with that really strange low level last year, when long-tenured repairing owners have had drought situations, but they have never seen the, the water so low, is just concerning. And so I, there's still in the back of my mind, wow, if we have something going on, we should be prepared to learn more before we run into another situation like that. That's my perspective.
Greg?
Just to follow up on that, Mary, Mary, I think the last 10 years, we've had two years of drought, which happened to be 2021 and 2023. So that's what we, we've seen. I'm for this measure because I'm for a healthy lake, and, and that may not fall in line with the lake level, people that want to see the lake level actually go up. This study may come back and, and not coincide with that. We, we made a recommendation from City Council a couple of months ago, and the DNR actually came back with a stricter version of that, where in the fall, we have to follow a little bit stricter version than what the council originally passed. So this study may come back. In the end, it could be a different lake level than what we currently have.
And I'm, and that is a part of science, and art, and math, and speculation, and guess, guess, I mean, this is, that's the complex world we're in with, with this subject. So I, I recognize that, my, is a, is a possibility, which is why I think the question regarding what, what does, what does, this is not a problem look like, or what does this, is a problem look like as it relates to these studies? I'm not certain that that level of detail has been shared, but that would be, I think, just further conversations that would be warranted.
I'm also in support of this resolution, and I think, if I remember right, we have 20,000 in council contingencies for whatever might come up. And it seems to me there was four items that DNR was recommending to be done, and Jefferson County is going to take care of three of them, and now it sounds like they and DNR are going to take care of half of the other one. So this is really just a small cost for us to get all of that data that we would, that DNR would say that they would need if we wanted to pursue a change in the water level order. And as you said, Greg, it may not, the results may not support DNR approving a change in the water level order, but it's more information, it's more data. I know from talking to Patricia Cicero, both at our February meeting and, and prior to that, she indicated that this data will have a lot of use for the management of, and understanding of Rock Lake, and as you said, having it be a healthy lake. So even if it doesn't tell us or suggests that we should change the water level order, it can also, it can give us a lot of other useful information to help manage and keep the lake healthy. So I, I think this is a small cost that we would incur, even if we don't know if we're going to request a water level order change, to be able to get additional information and, and learn more about the lake. Any other questions or discussion on this item? Okay, if not, can we have a roll call vote, please, on Resolution 24-35, which is authorizing the use of council contingency for the survey of 40 plant community sites near and around Rock Lake?
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Ms. Schmager?
Aye.
Ms. Quednow?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0.
Okay, thank you. So now we will bounce back up to where we left off on the agenda, which was Letter E, Resolution 24-31 regarding intergovernmental agreement with the town of Lake Mills. So Madison, when you're ready, could you read that title for us?
Resolution authorizing the city managers to submit and, upon acceptance, execute intergovernmental agreements with the town of Lake Mills for the provision of building inspection services.
I move to approve Resolution 24-31 as written.
Motion by Ms. Quednow, seconded by Mr. Fields. Drake?
This should look similar to, to most of you. I believe we approved the last ones just prior to Mary coming on the council. So the town of Oakland and the town of Koshkane have executed those agreements. We will not be providing building inspection services to the town of Jefferson, which leaves us capacity. The town of Lake Mills recently had their longtime building inspector leave, took another position elsewhere with who they were contracting with, and so they reached out to us with interest in, in something like this. So this is same form as the previous time you've seen it. This has additional benefit to the city if we, if the, if the town board ultimately acquiesces to it in that we, because of our utilities that extend into the township as well, there will be some better, some increased coordination, easier coordination, I'll say, on some of those approvals, because we'll be coordinating with our very own building inspector. And just another opportunity for increased collaboration in the region, and we think we recommend approval.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Greg?
I support the, the shared resource aspect. I just wanted to point out that there's the possible meeting conflict on the second Tuesday of every month, where Public Works meets at 6 o'clock, and the town board meets at 7 o'clock. So maybe there's ways to move, if Ms. Remington's going to be speaking at Public Works, move that to the beginning of the meeting, and maybe the town board can, can, can be a little bit, recognize that maybe he would be a little late to the meeting, or something to that effect.
I would, yeah, I would hope there would be some understanding that he, his obligations to the city come, come first. So there would have to be an accommodation if he did need to appear at the town board meeting, and it was also needed at a public works board meeting, that he would attend following his obligation to the, the public works board.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, if not, let's have a roll call vote on Resolution 24-31, which authorizes the city manager to execute an intergovernmental agreement with the town of Lake Mills for the provision of building inspection services.
Ms. Schmager?
Aye.
Ms. Quednow?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you. Next item is Letter F, Resolution 24-32, which is ratifying the police union contract. Madison, would you read that title for us?
Resolution ratifying the collective bargaining agreement between the City of Lake Mills and the Lake Mills Professional Police Association, and authorizing the city manager to execute the collective bargaining agreement on behalf of the city.
I'll move to approve Resolution 24-32, ratification of police union contract.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Waters, seconded by Ms. Quednow. Drake?
We are glad to have come to an agreement with our police union. It's our negotiating team's opinion that this is an equitable agreement, and we recommend approval of, of said agreement. We believe it makes great strides in remaining and becoming competitive with our police department wages, and addresses some other, other minor things within the, within the contract. But we are, we're satisfied with the terms and recommend the city council approve it.
Okay, any questions or comments? Mary?
I do have one question. As I'm, as I'm reflecting on something I learned about at our last meeting, the neighborhood service officer is noted as a special role, and it wasn't noted in the...
It's not a union member.
Oh, thank you.
Specifically not empowered to arrest.
Okay. I saw that there was the school resource officer, but I, I didn't understand why.
The school resource officer is a sworn police officer with arrest authority.
Oh.
So they, that is a, that is an assignment within the police department with, for the police officers.
Thank you.
Good clarification. Greg?
What's a Kelly Day?
Oh, I looked that up.
Let me see if I can explain. Kelly Day is a mandatory off day that becomes necessary because of a, a, I guess, a quirk in their schedule. So their schedule is not, is 8.25, is 8.25 hours a day, and so eventually that accumulates to a point where they require a, an off day in their schedule, which they would have otherwise been scheduled to work. So it's a, it's a, it's a mandatory day off, made necessary by the type of schedule that they're working, which is utilized in public safety.
It's almost like a comp day type of thing?
It was initiated by a mayor in Chicago whose last name was Kelly. I had to look it up because I didn't know what a Kelly Day was.
Came from.
I did some Googles.
We don't have that in the public sector.
I'm learning so much.
Excuse me, the private sector.
It is, it is specific to public safety. You see them in fire departments, EMS departments, police departments. Because, and it's just a reality of their usually atypical work schedules as compared to other employees.
Any other questions or comments? I want to specifically thank Drake and Dan and Chief Schrader for all their work in negotiating this agreement, and I think it, I'm in support of it, and I think it would, it helps to represent the, one of our strategic goals in supporting public safety in our community. So thank you for all your work in negotiating this. Okay, let's have a roll call vote, please, on Resolution 24-32, which is ratification of the police union contract.
Ms. Quednow?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Ms. Schmager?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you. Next item is Resolution 24-33, which is yard waste disposal and distribution point. Now, Madison, would you read that title for us?
Resolution authorizing the relocation of the yard waste disposal and distribution point to the CP Avenue location.
Is there a motion?
I move approval of Resolution 2433.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Schmager, seconded by Mr. Waters. I see we have our public works director here, Randy.
Hello.
Take it away.
So I have been putting together different versions of a new yard waste site for a number of months, and proposing these to the public works board. We've made revisions. We think we've come to a conclusion, well, how to move forward. What you're looking up on the screen is an opinion of what a new yard waste site should cost us. We propose to put this at the end of CP, the south end of CP Avenue. The lion's share of the cost is going to be with a new gate, so I'll focus on that right now. We are not looking at a entire fence perimeter, but just the gate. And one of the challenges we were faced with was providing access at times that everyone could make use of. I had originally had proposed just having this yard waste center open during business hour, city business hours, but it was presented to me that we should make this more available. So we started looking for a different access system. What I have quoted up there is for a key fob system or a keypad system. I have not, I'm not presenting to you any particular days or times of when we could have a yard waste site open. I am... I am listening to suggestions on that. It has been made clear to me that the public works board would like seven-day access from my how I understand it. So with a key fob system, we can provide that. Then with that same system, we could also have the gate shut off on its own in the evening at, you know, pre-planned time, sometime that would be considered safe. But that shaded gray area there is represents the key fobs. That right now, the key reader system would be up for up to a thousand cards. We plan on implementing these here at City Hall. There would be a fee to acquire one of these cards. Drake actually brought up a good suggestion, and maybe some people, we could implement a plan for renting the cards for a time. If someone just has a week or two weeks' worth of yard work, they can perhaps rent the card. We do have the ability to upgrade to a reading system for up to eight thousand cards. The cards do come at a cost to the city from six to eight dollars. The other larger part of the pie for costs is in cameras. You will find in my submittal that there are specifications for the type of cameras we're looking at. These cameras need to be NDAA certified, which is a security measure. I did get a price, an initial price for three of these cameras. Next slide, please. And I would propose to mount these cameras on existing utility poles we have there on site. So this is a plan view of what we would have proposed the site to look like. The gray blocks would represent precast concrete that we already have. We might have to acquire a few more, but we I would taper at the end of CP Avenue the lane into the gate, and then the gate would be we'd have the keypad outside the gate, the opening mechanism would be inside the gate, and then we'd have the perimeter block. Our first action would be to build the base. We would start removing the top soil and then build about a twelve-inch base, a subbase with three quarter, three-inch stone, and then a capstone on top of that. Next slide, please, Dave. I envision it's going to look very similar to the one we have at Light and Water. You'll see the keypad is right there. The housing unit for the mechanics is behind the gate right there, but I propose to recreate something very similar to this, where residents can acquire a keypad, and this gives us the ability to track it easier, how often they're using this, if perhaps, you know, give us an indication if someone's passing it along to someone else and that. But this is basically my proposal. Then the remaining slides, and you have them for you, are just the specifications. This is the housing unit for the mechanics of the, you know, for the operations. It has a go back to that original slide, Dave, thank you. It has a sensitivity. I'm trying to recall the word for it. Basically, it will retract the gate if something is blocking its path, and that's key, because I do worry about this. If it's going to be unmanned, I am worried about people getting hurt or children playing on it, so this was important to us. Next slide, then. Our pad would not look like this necessarily. It's going to look more like the one I demonstrated for at Light and Water, but the data on the right side is important, if you wanted to follow up on that. Next slide, please. And the next slide. No, oh, that's for the keypad. Go down to the next slide, please. Trying to get to the cameras. Dave, is there one more slide at the end? There we go. So these are the NDAA cameras. They're very accurate now, very sophisticated. We intend to have one that would be able to focus on license plates if necessary, and we are looking at different ways to receive the images. We could either have a CPU set up in the well number six building nearby, or we could perhaps by Wi-Fi have this linked to our laptops. Any questions? Yes?
Michelle? So I'm looking at slide eight and noticed at the bottom that there's a Android smartphone programming and user entry. Is that only for that particular model that's noted in the digital keypad's access control?
Yes, that is an upgraded model.
Okay, so do we have an idea as to how much that would be?
I do not.
Okay.
That is going to be more expensive than anything I've quoted.
Sure. Well, the only reason I ask is because you mentioned the the cards, original was, what was it, a thousand cards?
Yes.
For a population of almost seven thousand people in this city, I think it would be a it would be a hard sell to or it would be difficult to say that these things wouldn't get transferred, you know, like?
We'll likely upgrade to the eight thousand.
Okay, so even if we do the eight thousand, right, if it's a card, there's a couple of concerns I have with that, and that is one that if it's a card and we charge for the card, then if they lose the card, of course, there's going to be an additional charge, but then, you know, there's 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 a lot of of logistics about this that that are sitting in my brain. For instance, my husband likes to do things last minute, and so when he mows the lawn, he might not think, oh, gee, I need to go find my car to go to take it to the yard waste, where right now he can go and do what he's got to do, take it down to the yard waste without any issue. I'm not saying that he's a normal situation, but I'm just giving you the worst case scenario.
He doesn't watch these meetings.
He doesn't watch these meetings, no. He doesn't know I'm throwing him under the bus. It's okay. But the 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 fact of the matter is is that this what I'm concerned about, where if we're going to make it more complicated with cards, that it it will actually inconvenience our citizens when the whole point of this was because there was a lot of businesses that were dumping crap that they that we couldn't recycle. That was the purpose of, as far as I remember, of of doing something like this, because there was there was things that were being deposited there that couldn't be recycled. So I don't necessarily want to punish the people who live here and pay their taxes and whatever if the main culprits of the of the reason why we need security aren't our citizens. Does that make sense?
I think you've identified a key decision point for the council, and what is the priority? Convenience or control? We they are largely mutually exclusive. More control is less convenient. More convenience is less control. We could set the gate on a timer and have it open at 7:00 AM and close at 7:00 PM, and you don't need any cards. We would rely on the on review of cameras to find people who were not permitted to be to be dropping off. That probably would be work for capturing contractors with contractor-grade vehicles and contract and significant amounts of waste. It likely will be more difficult to township residents are not allowed to dump. At the current site, the ordinance doesn't allow them, it doesn't allow them to dump. We we know they are. The cameras may or may not be able to, you know, identify someone and say, well, that's a township resident dumping there that's not supposed to. So we we may be the the timer would be more convenient. It would be less expensive, but we would have less control over how we would over who can get in.
Steve?
But at the same time, it might be less expensive, but what are we incurring for costs by having garbage dumped there and appliances and extra stuff? We're already incurring a significant cost extra than what we should be.
That is correct.
So by adding the cards, yeah, that's a cost, but what is the offset for? We don't know what the offset is. We know we're wasting a lot of money right now hauling junk away.
Yeah, I think he said it was, if I remember correctly, it was like seventy-six thousand or something like that. I recall something like seventy-six. It was either seventy-six hundred or seventy-six thousand. I know it's a huge discrepancy, so.
It depends what gets dropped off.
Right.
We've we've had we've had, yeah, if you have, we've had gasoline containers dropped off, we've had appliances dropped off, we've had appliances that use freon dropped off, we've had shingles dropped off, we've had paint dropped off. Randy, I don't know if you have any, we've had a lot of things that get dropped off that we incur costs to properly dispose of.
We had a bear there last week.
Oh.
A black bear. Camera caught it, too.
Yes, to drop off something?
Yeah, exactly.
I was very interested in what was there. So I I mean, that's a really good point, and I don't want to, I wasn't bringing that up to like make it difficult, but just to bring up the point that there there's going to be people who are going to be upset that they have to come to the city hall, get a card, to go do the thing that they used to be able to do just for convenience purposes. That being said, I do like the idea of the eight thousand or whatever, you know, the cards that we get a bulk amount of eight thousand, and then we can charge whatever it has to be for a year, and I'd imagine it would be probably a year rental or whatever. And, you know, our citizenry would get used to it. Change is hard, but change is necessary. So it's I get that. I think I was just trying to figure out what would, like you were saying, Drake, what would what is our priority? Is it convenience or is it control? So, Steve?
One other quick question on the numbers. You have the monthly internet. Is the is it actually two hundred dollars a month, or should that be twelve and be twenty-four hundred dollars? That would add twenty-two hundred to the bottom line.
That is a monthly fee.
Of two hundred, so we should go to twelve, so then it would add twenty-two hundred to the bottom line?
Yeah, that'll be incorporated into our operating budget, so.
Okay.
We will have to find that within the public works budget. We have around forty thousand dollars in change. We have twenty thousand dollars budgeted in this budget and a little over twenty thousand dollars, I believe, in carryover funds for the capital expenditures. Those ongoing costs will have to incorporate into the operating budget.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Mary, did you have your hand up before?
Well, I was just I was going to just ask a question of Michelle. The keypad is another option. Was that was that more expensive, Randy, the keypad, the one with the number? Because then you were using scenario of forgetting your physical card or physically have to get a card versus being issued a number as a keypad.
Or I was thinking that, because it doesn't mention, and I know this is going to be more expensive, but if you had the app, you could boop it, for lack of a better word, and that would be the the data point. That would be your way of boop it, yes. That would be your way of of being able to show that this is I went to the place to drop off the things. It it wouldn't be a card that necessarily could be transferred to my neighbor, and then, you know, it it could be.
Unless you gave it to the phone.
Right, right. You're you're it's much more specific to, but again, if this is a cost analysis issue, then I think that that might have something to do with it.
So you're asking, what's the cost of the keypad as compared to the cost?
As compared to the card, because I was saying, would that solve the concern you had about leaving a physical thing to get in at home or in the wrong vehicle? I was just trying to.
Or being constrained by a timeframe.
There was a solution that Randy had the keypad and noted or picture of it, isn't I thought maybe that might be an alternative, not sure.
That's that's security versus control again, because it's so much easier. I can give you the four-digit code, you can go in there.
I don't like it as well. I was just trying to see.
There's no tracking system to it to a punch code, because I can give it to all of you, and you could walk in there.
Right. The phone, actually, is the most specific to your point, but that's carries the highest cost.
It's the cost.
Yeah.
The initial cost for the keypad is less expensive. Operation for the cost for the keypad, though, will become greater over time. That is something that would take more management here in City Hall for programming, so.
And I don't know if we had received yet the cost of upgrade, because we got the quote for a thousand, a CPU that could do a thousand codes. Did they also provide enough for something that could the CPU that could handle eight thousand codes?
No.
So we we had asked them, the vendors, for those upgrades. The card system got back to us, but we have not yet heard back from upgrading the keypad system to basically allow us to issue more codes than a thousand. I'm I'm sure it's possible, but we don't, we haven't received that information yet.
We had consulted some surrounding communities also that have had both systems, and the feedback we have gotten was that the key card system worked most efficiently.
I've got a few questions, and I guess, well, maybe I'll comment first. I'm very much in support of moving the yard waste facility to this different site. I don't think Stony Road has enough space really, and the road is damaged. There's many reasons that that probably everybody understands of why it would be good to move it, and I also support having better operational controls so that we don't have those costs of the improper dumping. I'm I'm wondering about some of the details like, well, there was a community survey, what was that, five, six years ago now, that asked people, you know, what they wanted in yard waste and, you know, facilities, and I think it even included people in the township who wanted to have access to it and were willing to pay. I think the majority of residents are accustomed to having it be free, so I think we are going to get, I'd be interested to know, like, how much do we think we're going to charge for these cards? Is that just to offset our costs, or is that something that we can just provide for our citizens and charge for others who maybe are not taxpayers in Lake Mills? I I guess I'd like us to think about that, whether that's, you know, how much of a cost is it really, and would we want to continue having it be available for free, understanding that there are additional costs for security and so forth. But I and I guess just one last thought before you answer that I am in favor of greater control, even though there will be, you know, less convenience to it, because I think the problems that we've had suggest that it's needed.
So this isn't a perfect number, but the electric utility has approximately forty-five-hundred customers. That does include non-city residents. At eight dollars a card, if that was our cost for obtaining the cards, it's a thirty-six-thousand-dollar expense. You could buy them and give them away for free, so it's going to be less than that thirty-six-thousand dollars if you're just giving them to city to city residents, city households, but it'll be it'll be a a five-figure sum that we would have an outlay of that is not included in the forty thousand dollar budget we have to move it to CP Avenue.
Okay, that's that's helpful to understand that. And so this would be a one-time fee, though, I would assume, right? Like, you don't have to pay eight dollars every year. You pay eight dollars for the card, and then you keep it until you lose it or gets damaged or something like that.
There has to be a replacement of, you know, if you needed a replacement, there'd be a fee to replace it. What Randy mentioned is when we were talking about whether to extend this to non-residents, whether we have cards that exist and a non-resident could come in and get a card for a weekend and pay a fee, and so they get they get a card that they have to then return, you know, by a date certain, or we deactivate the card or something like that from the management system. Those are things we've started kicking around about how we could, if the council wanted to, open this up to not to non-residents. The ordinance would have to be amended, I believe. It does not allow for it allows only for residents to be dumping. It doesn't allow contractors, and it doesn't allow non-residents. So I think we can move forward with the plan to move it without having that those pieces fully flushed out yet. If the council wants to have a conversation about the merits of extending the the service at a cost to non-residents, but that's that's kind of the the outlay. We would anticipate you you buy the card, and as long as that card remains in working condition, you can continue to use it.
Be a one-time.
Our only the only concern with this system, which I don't think is avoid is is avoidable, is we've experienced this with like our key fobs to enter into doorways. These companies change how their systems work. They change the models in which they provide these services. They transition to different subscriptions, different softwares, and so there could be a time in the future in which the original key cards we purchase are no longer compatible with a system. I don't know when that would happen, but it likely does at some point in the future. It's just something we've experienced as we're trying to update, get more key fobs for our internal security of city buildings. We've run into that issue where we can't get the fobs that we originally had, and they're no longer compatible with our system, so you have to upgrade the the key fob, the the security system and get new key fobs. So there there will be costs in the future associated with it, so I can't promise you it's a. it's a, definitely a one-time fee, um, because there could be a change required in the future based on technological or business decisions made by the providers of these systems.
That's helpful, and that's good, good thing to keep in mind, I think. Um, I just wanted to make sure it wasn't like an annual fee that somebody pays or something like that. It would be generally a one-time fee until something, if the system needed to be replaced. Um, so what is the timeline that, um, you're looking at, Randy, for making the move?
I would like to get started as soon as possible. Um, if I could get this done by June, it would be most beneficial for the city. Um, I'm actually prepared to start doing the earthwork within the next week, so.
Just another question.
Yeah, Mary.
How does the TID, CP Avenue work on the TID impact this plan?
Uh, we already own it, so it's, it's a non-contributing property parcel to the Tiff district, so it's, it's not.
So CP, CP Avenue go, is part of the project in 2026, so it, and when I look at this, I'm trying to visualize, I'm looking at the picture, where the gate is, is where the road will continue. So do we have anything that we need to be thinking about there?
Yeah, so it's surface to that point. We build base. Previous conversations about the merits of moving it to CP Avenue was not building a system that is so permanent that we can't move it again.
Yeah, yeah.
If a development opportunity or something else happened, so.
Okay.
We would, could adjust in the future if, if that happened. Um, since we're only putting in the gate, we're not building a whole fencing system, we're not paving it, we're, we're not putting in, we're, we're keeping this at as low of a cost as we can to benefit the city. Um, Randy, do you have anything to add?
I'd just say the gate is really the only fixed asset to this system, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Greg.
So Randy, just to get clarity, you're recommending the keypad system then?
I'm recommending the key card system.
Key card system?
Yes, sir.
So, um, again, it sounds like you're ready to start construction if the council would approve this tonight. I, I would still like to see some further recommendations from the Public Works Board as far as how to, um, address contractors, how, you know, what sort of fee, um, or maybe some additional fee, uh, we might charge to non-city residents, or, you know, make, establishing that weekend piece. I mean, I think that would be something that we could get some recommendations from them and, and flesh out some of those implementation, implementation details. Um, and I think we're going to need to do a lot of communication within the community when the old site is closed off, and, you know, because otherwise, the appliances will keep going to Stony Road while the yard waste goes to the new site.
I would even say we should start as soon as possible with that communication, because yard waste is already being put out there. I mean, with all the rain, and then we mow and all of those things, I think it's important that as soon as we can get that information out, it should be, um, made known when that implementation date is, is affirmed.
Absolutely. Yes. We would probably post signs at the original site. Uh, there'll be postings on our website and our Facebook page.
Fantastic. Any other questions?
We can also put, uh, we can also put an insert into utility bills.
Idea. Great idea.
I like that idea.
And, and, you know, maybe there'll be some slight overlap for, but, and, but, you know, giving some dates for people to be aware of would be a good idea.
Okay. That's probably the least cost, um, to have to just insert it into the utility bill, so. I approve that idea.
Any other comments or discussion? Greg.
I'd like to make a motion that the last whereas would read, whereas they are budgeted funds of approximately four thousand for the completion of this project, which would include the use of a key card system for seven days a week during daylight hours.
Did you say forty thousand or four thousand?
Forty.
Forty, okay. That I heard four.
So there's a motion to amend the last whereas to add the phrase, say, say it again, Greg, so everybody gets it.
Which would include the use of a key card system open seven days a week during daylight hours.
My only clarif, my only, I think the motion is to approve the resolution with that addition.
Right.
So if it's approved, you won't have to take another motion to approve the resolution as amended. It would stand approved with that insertion.
Oh, well, we already have a motion.
Oh.
On the table, so.
I forgot, I'm sorry.
Yeah, okay.
I'm sorry.
So I think we have to, yeah.
Yeah, you're correct. I apologize.
So I'm making an amendment.
Okay, is there a second on the motion to amend?
Second.
Okay, motion by Mr. Waters, seconded by Ms. Schmager to amend the final whereas in the resolution twenty-four dash thirty-five. Any discussion?
I do have a question.
Sorry, twenty-four dash thirty-three.
If we're too specific in that whereas, and let's say something falls through, are we putting ourselves in a corner?
We'll come back.
Well, that's going to put us back two weeks though, because then we come back, it's going to be coming back the next meeting day, and that's going to set Randy back a couple of weeks.
Yeah, uh, we know the key card system's available, we know it's an option, so I don't anticipate it being an issue.
Okay.
Um, if it were to be, we would have that delay, but, um, I'm optimistic we'd be able to work through it.
And I, I like this because it gives clarity on the hours, so when you, you can start communicating to people about when the facility is going to be available.
And this would allow the Public Works Board to make recommendations on card cost, and, um, if we're going to allow township residents to use it, what their fee might be, and that suggestion would come back to council at a later date.
Sounds great.
That sounds great. Steve?
I agree with the idea. The only thing I'd be concerned about is saying daylight hours. I've been down there in the fall raking grass out of the back of my truck after dark just from mowing in the evening, so.
Seven to seven.
But we'll let the Public Works kind of tweak that for us.
Yeah. See, this is what I'm saying, Steve.
So you want lights installed now?
No.
Is that what you're saying?
No, I don't.
Okay.
I use my truck lights.
I would suggest we, um, approve the amendment and then allow the Public Works Board to make a different recommendation if they have some other thoughts, if they want to clarify that language, and then we can consider that when we look at the other pieces. Okay, any further discussion on the amendment? Okay, can we have a roll call on the proposed amendment to resolution twenty-four dash thirty-three?
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Ms. Schmager?
Aye.
Ms. Quinell?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes five-zero.
Okay, so we have resolution twenty-four dash thirty-three as amended. Is there any further discussion? Okay, if not, can we have a roll call vote, please, on resolution twenty-four dash thirty-three as amended, which is regarding resolution authorizing the relocation of the yard waste disposal and distribution point to the CP Avenue location?
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Ms. Schmager?
Aye.
Ms. Quinell?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Motion passes five-zero.
Thank you. I note that the time is twelve minutes after ten. We have one agenda item left. Are people prepared to continue so we can complete that last agenda item? Okay, thank you. So the last item is ordinance twelve sixty-four, uh, which is amending chapter one fifty-three officers and employees, article five, neighborhood service officer powers and duties. This is the second reading. Uh, so Madison, would you do the second reading of the title, please?
Amending chapter one fifty-three officers and employees, article five, neighborhood service officer, one fifty-three dash nine, powers and duties.
Thank you. That was the second reading. Uh, so by ordinance, we're required to have three readings. So this would carry on to our next agenda. Okay, uh, so we're completed with council business, recommendations for future agendas. Um, Greg and I will be chatting with Drake about a format for a goal setting, so we'll, um, uh, we'll probably get something out to everybody in terms of trying to set a date for a work session to do our goal setting, likely sometime in June, but, so we'll try to work out, work up some ideas for what process we want to follow for doing our goal setting, since it's kind of a new, new thing for us. Um, so that'll be a work session separate from council meetings. Any other, um, agenda items, Drake, that you have?
This week, we will complete our interviews with the, um, proposers for the engineering and planning firms. Uh, next week, the evaluation team will be compiling scores and coming to a recommendation and bringing it to the, uh, city council on the twenty-first.
Anything else from council members, Greg?
Just for Public Works, what we just discussed, that, um, that they would review the card cost, and if, um, if they would open that up beyond the city, and what cost would that be?
Um, I know that the, um, ad hoc, uh, Urban Fourth Street Committee is working on something, um, that's due to us by May, May thirty-first or June first, I think. Um, so that'll probably be in June when they.
Yeah, they've requested to have, they, they anticipate having their recommendation formulated, um, by June, but have requested the second meeting in June so that they can put their presentation together.
Okay, okay. And then Parks Board is working on the Mill Pond Resolution, and they will either, I think, give us a report, or they will do a six-month update sometime in June. So those are other things that we can expect coming forward.
Who's the new Parks person?
Mary Schmager.
Mary, okay. All right.
Okay, any other, um, future agendas, Mary?
I have, I'm not sure how this, how this conversation gets brought to the table, but I was reflecting back on a comment, Greg, you made at the last meeting when we were discussing the waiver of the special event fee, and the fact that we were looking at a forty-dollar item, and the big scheme of what I think the accountability set is of the city council is just a curious, um, curious to me, and I, I didn't know if there were either ordinances or, I don't know what particular formality there is that the waiver process can come to our attention, but at some point in time, it would be, I think, of value if there are any specific, um, things that we can talk about that would bring us up to a level that would not put us in line of sight of forty dollars, or some nominal amount to me seems like it was not, is not necessarily the best use of our time. And I, I, it's just a, an observation, and I, a conversation that I think it might be worth having, but I don't know how you would go identifying those types of things, and, and whether it's worthy of, I, you know, I'm trying to keep us at the important aspects and the forty-dollar, you just brought to my attention, yeah, you're right, it was a small amount.
Can I add comment? I think I can. So, um, we only see the ones that, that they go to city staff and, and they're told about the fee, and then they're the ones, the ones we see are the people that say, well, you know, I, I think this isn't right, you need to take this to city council type of thing, and that's, those are the ones that, that we see. Is that, is that correct?
It's required by ordinance. A waiver fee has to go to council, so you're correct, yeah.
Right.
Oh, so maybe it said ordinance.
They're the ones that take it to the next level, yeah.
Oh, so maybe it said ordinance, then just questioning. I just thought, found it was curious for, you know, just curious, and it, and it may not be worth our point of, to be a point of discussion, but it was.
Just an update, and it could be rolled into a future conversation that we're just not quite ready to present yet. We have been looking at our special event permit form and process, um, have, are, are very close to having a new, a new approval process, um, ready. Um, and one conversation regarding it that we want to have with the city council is the charging for city services in support of a special event. It's not something the city has ever done, but at times can be significant, um, dollars in support of a private event, and so, um, many communities charge for city services, and so it's a conversation we want to have with the city council on, is that something we want to do? And that'll be a much more significant, um, financial burden to people putting on special events than a permit fee, even if we were to raise that permit fee, you know, significantly to like a hundred and fifty dollars. We're, we have some events that we have forty-five, four thousand five hundred dollars in police overtime, right, in support of. We have, we have, uh, public works staff that puts in place barriers and, and other things in support of, of events, and traffic control or, or things of that nature. Um, so those will be much more impactful to those proposing a special event than even a significantly increased permit fee, so it's a conversation that we would like to have with the city council before we proceeded with trying to recoup, um, costs and what types of special events we want to do it for. Do we, you know, all those, are there different applicants, classes? What's that look like? So that is something we would like to have, we're just not quite ready yet.
And I think the town board actually raised their fee, I think it was more in the forty-dollar range, and I'm not sure what they raised it to, but they, they did raise it, uh, a year ago, so.
That's all I had.
Anything else? All right, seeing none, we're adjourned. Thank you.